I'll ask Reverend Charlie Martin if he'd come up and give our invocation this evening. Thank you.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give to all of us a spirit of service. Guide us in this gathering to be the leaders that your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of even those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. We ask this as your children, confident in your goodness and your love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend. Reverend Martin is here this evening from the Erlanger Christian Church. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting of May 3rd, 2016. I'd like to ask that we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll ask Mrs. Hoffman to take roll call.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes for the April 5th, 2016, regular council meeting, and the April 19, 2016, special council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented. Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, we've all got a copy of the agenda for the April 5th, 2016, regular council meeting. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll move into our special presentations. We've got our legislative update with Senator McDaniel. Thank you for being here this evening.
Kind of felt like I was in church sitting in the back pew again, huh? Appreciate you having me tonight. As we've talked many times, I try to get around after each session and give everybody an update as to what we did do and didn't do in Frankfurt this year. Sometimes the things that we didn't do are equally as important as those that we did. And so, to that end, I'll jump right in and I'll try to be as brief as possible. I won't cover everything that we did, but try to hit the high point. So, the overarching theme of the session, obviously, was the state's budget. The Commonwealth spends $10 billion of state tax revenue each year of the budget, and it's a biennial budget, so it's $20 billion of state tax revenue. And we also spend another $40 billion of federal tax revenue. And as the Chair of the Senate Appropriation and Revenue Committee, ultimately, it falls to me to write the Senate's version of the budget that's ultimately negotiated on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth. The biggest challenge that we face is the fact that in 2008, 18 percent of the total budget revenue went to pensions and Medicaid. By the end of this budget, that number will have gone from 18 percent to 33 percent of the general fund budget will go just to those same two items. So, there's quite the constricting effect on the balance of the budget when you put those in there. Medicaid expansion is running us about $190 million across the biennial budget, and so it really put a lot of strain on there. But we were able to do a lot of good things, and I'll talk more about those at the very end. First of all, though, some general legislation we passed. Senate Bill 169 allows electioneering within 100 feet of a polling place, and also expands the list of identification that can be used as identification at a polling place. Senate Bill 195 is cancer presumption that the firefighters have worked on for a long time. Senate Bill 4 is informed consent dealing with abortion. Senate Bill 11 is a series of updates to the Commonwealth's alcohol regulations, and for Northern Kentucky, this is really good because it was a very helpful piece of legislation for micro distilleries and micro breweries. Senate Bill 33 requires students to receive CPR training one time between grades seven and 12. Senate Bill 43 established a line of duty death benefit for EMS personnel. Senate Bill 56 extended the DUI lookback period from five years to 10 years. Senate Bill 64 deals with the way PVAs charge their fees. Senate Bill 46, this was actually a bill that I had sponsored, deals with local pension plans. As most of you know, before there was the CERS system, lots of cities and counties had their own pension plans, and those have gradually had fewer and fewer beneficiaries with time. But the fact is, there's actually no mechanism to close those plans and return the assets to the cities. So, this created a mechanism whereby we could do that. Senate Bill 134 allows biosimilar drugs to be prescribed in the Commonwealth. This is kind of a forefront of medicine and allows us to make those prescriptions. Senate Bill 167 deals with blighted property that's owned by cities, and the mechanism for its transfer also deals with how you collect adult lorm taxes and then the oaths that are taken in front of mayors. Senate Bill 168 deals with municipal audits and allows the auditor to charge fees. Senate Bill 179 is called the ABLE Act. This allows for basically 529 tax-free savings accounts for developmentally delayed individuals to be created. Senate Bill 206 is another one that I'm sure the cities will probably use a lot of. This allows retired police officers to be re-employed without paying the second time for the pension. As you know, when you rehire a police officer, they're not eligible for a second pension anymore, but the pension contribution is still required. This eliminates that requirement. Senate Bill 40 deals with felony expungements for certain low-level felonies. House Bill 16, this was a really good one that Gabe Summy, who's our clerk, brought forward. Kenton County is unique in Kentucky because we're actually required to keep two sets of recording books, one in Covington and one in Independence. This was by statute in 1895, and we're the only county out of 120 counties in Kentucky that were required to keep two sets of books. So, we said that basically all we have to do now is keep them just in Covington. Saves the county about $15,000 a year in recording fees. Don't ask me why. It's been since 1895. I mean, 121 years. We move quickly in the legislative process. House Bill 124 allows proceeds from the sale of confiscated firearms to be used to purchase body cameras. Right now, you know they can be used for body armor. It expands it to cameras. House Bill 428 imposed additional regulation on dogfighting in the Commonwealth. House Bill 189 changed the process for amending inter-local agreements so that if you amended them, that you wouldn't need to seek the Attorney General and Department of Local Government's approval anymore on those. House Bill 250 removed the requirements for police officers to cite and release for most misdemeanors if they were committed in the presence of the police officer. House Bill 309 was public-private partnerships. House Bill 343 deals with clarifying some statutes for overlapping fire protection districts. House Bill 473 codified the number of hours required to be a POP-certified officer. And then, House Bill 585 is the 911 funding bill. As you know, right now, if you have a landline, you pay for 911. If you have a cellphone with a service through Verizon or Sprint or anybody, you pay for 911. But if you have a prepaid phone, you don't pay for 911 service. So, this basically establishes that if you have a prepaid phone, you also pay for 911 service. Couple of quick things that I did specifically. I had my bill for the fourth year in a row to move the governor's race to even-numbered years. Saves us about $18 to $20 million every election cycle. Would seem to be common sense, but that one died in the House Committee. We talked about my Senate Bill 46. Senate Bill 45 would have made legislative pensions subject to open records requests. You can obviously, you can go on my Facebook page. I put mine on there, but I'm the only one out of 138 that you can see what my pension would equate to, and I think it's about $5,800 bucks. So, not real exciting. We had Senate Bill 73 to allow for people to opt out of the legislative pension, Diden House Committee. Senate Bill 94 dealt with prevailing wage, allowed it to be a local option. If Erlanger was going to do a project, Erlanger could choose whether or not to use prevailing wage. That didn't clear the Senate. Senate Bill 246, the state police pay scale, it actually passed as another bill, but it got through. The state police had gotten real crammed up center career with their pay scale, and this allowed to fix that. And then, Senate Bill 247 was the beginning of work that actually we did some additional stuff for in the budget, and it's dealing with genomic research. As most of you know, the future of medicine, it's going to be customized to your DNA. And this is not like science fiction. You can now get a genomic analysis for about $7,000. And there's a very real medical diagnosis, which is basically undiagnosable conditions. And specifically in pediatric patients, this can be a devastating effect, and it has an effect on the family and also has an effect on the Commonwealth. Obviously, the family's effect is you have a child who can't be diagnosed. But what we see time and again, as everyone here would, if you had a child with an undiagnosed condition, you'd spend everything that your family had trying to find an answer. And that's what we find, and most of these families with these undiagnosed conditions will ultimately put their families through bankruptcy or something similar, and they end up in the Medicaid system. And then, we'll spend several hundreds of thousands of dollars in Medicaid, and we have about a 5 percent success rate ultimately in finding cures for the, or at least understanding the conditions. Modern genomics will indicate that we can raise that to about a 40 percent success rate. So, what we did is we allocated $1 million in each year of the biennium to the University of Louisville. I met with their researcher there, who's a brilliant guy named Dr. Purie, about teaming with a group in Arizona who's at the forefront of genomic analysis worldwide, to be able to do that research and understand how in pediatric patients with undiagnosed conditions, A, we can diagnose them quicker and more efficiently, and also it is savings to the Medicaid system. So, I'm excited to see where that research will go. House Bill 129 was the road plan. I'm going to talk about a few things briefly out of the road plan. First of all, we did secure money for rework on the Brent Spence Bridge. This is not a new Brent Spence Bridge. This is structural repairs. This is pavement rehab. This is repainting of the existing structure, basic maintenance that should have been done all along. 536, we secured money to continue the work on acquiring right-of-way in Kenton County for the expansion of 536. And then, also of significance, we're extending Houston Road on out to the cinema property there. There's some design money in the second year of the biennium that's in a good funding stream, so I would anticipate some work to begin on that as well. Yeah, so, we have to keep working, but it's definitely there. House Bill 303 was the budget bill, and this is ultimately what we went down there to The governor issued a historic number of vetoes, both on regular bills and also inside of the budget, two of which are of note here tonight. First of all, was to publication language, basically trying to put cities on even par with Departments of Education in terms of how you can actually advertise. This really is a huge impact in Kenton County because, as you know, every city in Kenton County ends up having to advertise in the Inquirer, which gets very expensive. That was vetoed. And then, secondarily, traditionally, there's been about $150,000 that's line item annually into South Bank Partners. Doesn't particularly affect Erlanger, but does affect Northern Kentucky. The money is still there, but the line item in the budget was vetoed by the governor. In the budget bill, though, we did fully fund the Commonwealth's pension plans, plus put in an additional $1.2 billion towards the unfunded liability. We had equity funding for Northern Kentucky University. Most of you know that NKU is the lowest-funded university on a per pupil basis in the Commonwealth, and this begins to rectify that. Universities did have to take a 4.5 percent cut in each year of the biennium, but we did also fully fund Senate Bill 192, which was the heroin bill from last year. You'll recall that there's funding for a number of different remedies there, and we fully funded that, as well as the auditor's recommendation to pay for rape kits at the state police labs. Constitutional officers will take about a 3.5 percent cut in their budgets. We did put a requirement and money associated with it for performance-based funding in our universities, so they'll have to start having demonstrable results for portions of their funding moving forward. And finally, we passed work-ready scholarships to try to expand to those kids who can attend community college. That being said, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as always, I heard from most of you on council throughout the course of the session. I always appreciate that because, as we've talked about many times, both publicly and privately, the best thing we can do for our citizens is to work together on things, and I appreciate all of you and your partnership in that. Thank you.
Thank you Senator.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Any questions?
Yes.
Somebody wants to see what you just read. Where can they go?
So, if you go to the Legislative Research Commission's website, it's LRC.ky.gov, and pretty much right down the center, you'll see a thing that says 2016 Legislative Record. If you click on that, it will give you an option on how you can sort bills by who was the sponsor, by what did the governor sign into law, what did the governor veto, everything else. It's very simple, very user-friendly, and if there's any questions, there's also a 1-800 number on the website. You can call that number. They're super friendly people down there. Nobody's going to yell at you or anything. They'll walk you through, take you to exactly anything you want to know about. You can search by topic. It's a good website.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you sir.
Thank you again Senator.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is our Community Achievement Scholarship Recognition. Mr. Howard, Mrs. Cahill?
Thank you Mayor. Each, in the year 2000, we established Erlanger Community Achievement Scholarship Award, and based on community involvement, along with grades and all other aspects, but the community involvement was our biggest issue here. All high school seniors are eligible that are Erlanger residents to apply for our 2016 City of Erlanger Community Achievements for a $1,500 scholarship. The city received two applications this year. Students from Lloyd High School and St. Henry High School submitted their applications. The 2016 recipient received 530 points from six community judges. Representing our 2015 winner, Margot McGeehee, who's still in school, is her mother, Michelle McGeehee. Michelle will now tell us what Margot's been doing this past year and announce this year's award recipient, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here on Margot's behalf. I'm sure she'd rather be here than studying for finals. She did take a little time to send me an email just to fill you in on where she stands right now. She says, "Hello, City of Erlanger. I'm sorry I could not be here in person tonight, but finals week is just around the corner here at WKU. It's been a crazy year, but after a lot of exploration, I have decided to double major in economics and Arabic. I have also found a great community at WKU within the Honors College and the Christian Student Fellowship on campus, so it is safe to say WKU has truly become my home away from home. I have also had the privilege to take on leadership roles so early in my college career. I am employed in the Office of Admissions where I give tours to prospective students and their families. I am also an Honors College Ambassador where I give special honors tours and work Honors College recruitment events. I would like to thank you all again for presenting me with the 2015 City of Erlanger Scholarship. I was able to use this scholarship to go abroad this past winter to Haiti. From this third-world country, I was able to learn a lot about the economics of poverty, the importance of infrastructure and property protection rights, and so much more from my short time in the country. This trip is actually what sparked my interest in economics, which has since morphed into my main major. Thank you for making this opportunity available to me. I would like to offer my congratulations to the new 2016 scholarship recipient. Your hard work is paying off, so take a breath, realize how far you've come, and enjoy your day. Thank you again Erlanger, and I can't wait to be home with you all soon." So, the 2016 City of Erlanger Community Achievement Scholarship recipient is Abby Zieglemeyer. Abby, would you come up please? I've been asked to read a short profile on Abby. Abby is a senior at St. Henry High School. Abby has received many awards and honors, including High Honors for 2012-2013, honors for 2013 through 2016, the Leadership Cross for Swimming and National Honor Society, the June Kroger Scholarship, the Art III Award, as well as awards in soccer, swimming, the 110 percent award. She was also chosen to attend the Young Women League Conference for high school girls. Abby has been active in school clubs and organizations such as track and field, archery, swimming, soccer, National Honor Society, philanthropic club, student council, Crusaders for Life, and drama. Abby has contributed greatly to her school as a volunteer in many capacities, such as Vacation Bible School, the Parish Festival, Night for the Fight, Crusader Crazy Night, Senior Senior Prom, March for Life, and numerous sporting camps and tournaments. Please join us in congratulating Abby Zieglemeyer.
Didn't know I was going to say anything, so I just wanted to say how incredibly grateful I am for getting this and that the money will be put to good use, so thank you very much.
Congratulations Abby. The next item on the agenda is the oath of office. First up, we've got Officer Chad Gerdler, Sergeant Chad Gerdler. Soon to be. Do you have a Bible?
Yeah.
Do you want to go first?
No. I'll just, I'll read your Bible. Do you have a Bible up there?
Yeah, we've got.
That's going to be, I'm going to have my phone. Give you your choice.
All right, right hand, left hand on the Bible? All right. "I, Chad Gerdler, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of police sergeant according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have I sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God." All right, congratulations. Next up, we've got Daniel Napke. Left hand, or is that right? Is it right? Oh yeah.
Chief? Chief? Yes. Yeah. You want to say something?
Yeah, I think Chief Wilson wanted to address.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Excuse me. Daniel, give us one second. Sorry. I get so carried away.
I was just going to give a brief bio on Sergeant Gerdler. Chad grew up in Erlanger. He's been, he graduated from Lloyd High School. He started here in 1995 as a police explorer when he was a junior in high school. Then in 1999, we hired him as a part-time call taker in dispatch. He attended EKU. He received his bachelor's degree in police administration. 2001, he completed the Police Corps Program, which is a federal program that's no longer in existence. We hired several out of that program, and Chad is our most successful and I believe our last one here. Is that correct?
The only one still here.
The only one still here. The only other success story was Tasha Humphrey, and she's now an FBI agent. Let's see, he has held many positions here at the Police Department. He's an FTO, Field Training Officer, member of the bike team, and now he heads our reconstruction team along with Sergeant Sterling. And as you can tell by his uniform, he's our only K-9 officer that we have active right now. He's been involved in several different programs in his tenure here. So, he's been associated with the Police Department for 21 years now. One of our longest-standing members. He's a hometown boy. We're very proud to have him moving up through the ranks, so congratulations Chad.
I owe this honor of being here to past Chief Mark Fields, who spent a lot of time giving me the guidance that I needed to kind of build my path. I've spent a lot of time here, a lot of time getting to know a lot of people in the city, and I grew up here. My parents still live here in the city, and so I frequent even when I'm not working. But it's an honor. I appreciate it, and I look forward to do bigger and better things for the city. Thank you.
All right, next up then, okay, sorry Daniel. Chief, do you want to talk first and then swear in?
I should swear in first. So, actually, yeah, let me, I'll just give a, if you don't mind, we'll do it that way. We're introducing two new hires tonight, the swearing-in ceremony. First up is Mr. Napke, Daniel Napke. Daniel is an Ohio transplant. That's okay, I happen to know one. 30 years ago, and I haven't been back, so that's what we hope for you as well. Grew up out in the Williamsburg, or as I call it, Bad Avia area, way out there somewhere. Daniel's been doing this for a long time in such a short period. He began his fire service career at the age of 14 as a cadet for the Williamsburg Fire Department, and when he was old enough, he volunteered for them as well. Worked part-time for Stone Lick Township Fire Department, Mount Ork Fire Department, and the Oxford Fire Department. After graduating high school, Daniel attended Miami University of Oxford, where he received a bachelor's degree in business economics. He's been put onto the Budget Committee right away here, so we're going to have that forward too. He's also currently enrolled at EKU for Fire Protection Engineering, and he's a current student at UC Claremont in paramedic class, which you get out very soon. Yeah, the guys told me, they're ready and willing. He enjoys being active with his local church, traveling, and fishing. He dislikes snakes, so all you guys in the back, he dislikes snakes. They won't do anything with that. Looks forward to traveling with his wife, Ansley, who is here tonight. Together, they hope to go on an Alaskan or European cruise, don't we all? I know he's got a lot of family members here tonight. We'll go ahead and have the swearing, and welcome Daniel Napke to the Erlanger family.
Raise your right hand, good. All right. "I, Daniel Napke, do solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter EMT for the City of Erlanger, and to do my best, the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the City of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Erlanger, so help me God." All right, congratulations.
Second new recruit being sworn in tonight, I guess I can't call him a recruit, he's actually a hire. These guys are on shift, so, is Mr. Matthew Garrett. Matthew comes to us via Edgewood, not Ohio, not Edgewood, Ohio, our little neighboring city of Edgewood, so he is more of a local. He volunteered with the Edgewood Fire Department for the last four years, and he also worked part-time at Ryland Heights Fire Department. part-time at Ryland Heights Fire Department, part-time. He's a 2010 graduate of Covington Catholic High School, where he furthered his education by earning a bachelor's degree in arts and organizational leadership with the University of Northern Kentucky University. I always want to say University of Northern Kentucky, but it's NKU, you all know. He also minored in psychology, which is gonna be a great asset coming into the Fire Department. He enjoys the outdoors, baseball, and traveling, and he's quite the baker. He made a Mountain Dew bunt cake, I think his first or second. It had Mountain Dew in it, so you really can't go wrong, but it was very good, so guys will be taking advantage of that as well. Matthew looks forward to attending medic class and nursing school, and I believe your mother is a nurse, is that correct? Yes. So, let's get you through medic school, and let's step at a time there. But let's please all welcome Matthew Garrett.
"I, Matthew Garrett, do solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter EMT for the City of Erlanger, to do the best, to the best of my ability, excuse me, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the City of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Erlanger. So help me God." Congratulations. All right, the next item on the agenda, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let you guys finish up here. Anxious. All right, thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. Is Sarah Lutz present? Sarah, would you mind coming up? Welcome. Hello. If you wouldn't mind. I've got a proclamation here for you. If you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and read it. "Proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kentucky, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas Sarah Lutz loved running since she was in elementary school and set a goal of someday qualifying for and running the Boston Marathon. And whereas Mrs. Lutz ran nearly every day for the past 12 years, focusing her training on qualifying for the most prestigious race in the world. And whereas Mrs. Lutz had to finish a sanctioned marathon within a mandatory qualifying time and finished the Columbus Marathon an impressive 15 minutes faster than the time needed for entrance into the Boston Marathon. And whereas Mrs. Lutz's commitment paid off, and on April 18th, 2016, Sarah ran and completed the Boston Marathon in 3 hours, 46 minutes. And whereas the City of Erlanger would like to congratulate Sarah Lutz for completing her childhood dream of running in and finishing the Boston Marathon, a dream most runners spend a lifetime trying to achieve. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2016 to be Sarah Lutz Day in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger this third day of May, 2016." Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Don't open anything.
Congratulations. Great job.
I'd like to say thank you to Sarah's husband and also to Councilman, Mr. Dunhoff, for organizing this. Thank you. All right, the next item is City Clerk Week. I hope you guys like hearing me read. All right, another proclamation. I'll try to go quickly. All right, proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kentucky, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas, the month of May honors several individuals and departments throughout the City of Erlanger during this month. The City will be paying tribute to our City Clerk, police officers, building and zoning administrator, EMS, and public works employees. And whereas, let us recognize our City Clerk, Sherry Hoffman. The Office of Erlanger City Clerk serves as the professional link between the citizens of Erlanger and the local governing bodies and the agencies of the government at both level, or at other levels. The City Clerk is the information center of the city. And whereas, it is also important to recognize that the officers of the Erlanger Police Department serve Erlanger by safeguarding life and liberty, by protecting the citizens against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The officer, the police officers are the protectors of the city. And whereas, let us recognize our building and zoning administrator, Mark Stewart. This division of the government, the General Government Department, works year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings so that we may live, work, learn, and play in them. The building and zoning administrator is the foundation of this city. Whereas, in recognition, in recognizing the safeguarding of lives, the Erlanger Fire EMS Department's members of Emergency Medical Services engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, the EMS are the caretakers of the city. And whereas, the care of the city is also vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the public works employees. The health, safety, and comfort of Erlanger greatly depends on the services they provide. The public works employees are the keepers of the city. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2016 to be City Clerk Week. The week of May 15th to May 21st, 2016 to be National Police Week and Public Works Week and Emergency Medical Services Week. The month of May to be Building Safety Month in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this third day of May, 2016. No round of applause? Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Mayor's Report. I just wanted to give a couple of quick updates. This week, we are beginning the process of interviews for the Public Relations and Communications position that we've advertised for. We had received almost 90 applicants for that position, applications and resumes, and we are beginning the interviews with 11 candidates this week. So that's, I'm excited to see that happen. We've got a lot of high hopes and plans for that position. I believe Mr. Bogard is going to give us an update on the Norfolk Southern Crossing, or maybe, he's not gonna be here. Maybe Mr. Vioxx will be giving that in his report. We're also gonna hear about the progress on the SD-1 agreement from Mr. Gatlin. May 5th at 6:00 PM, there's a Kenton County Planning Commission meeting at PDS. Typically, there's not many people from Erlanger there. We are represented by Diane Brown each month at those meetings, and glad to have her there. But I think it's also good if we attend those as well. There are some items from Erlanger on the agenda this month, and if you haven't gone to one of those meetings recently, that's good, good to see how those operate, May 5th. May 9th at 5:30, there's an SD-1 meeting to discuss the fiscal budget for the upcoming year. Those are also good, good meetings to attend. That's May 9th. I'd encourage you to attend those. We are underway, well, actually, we've received proposals from a number of different companies regarding the studying our existing facilities and also a fire station study, and we've just begun, begun the process with that, and that is also a very exciting thing, something that, really, it's overdue for us to make sure that we understand the condition of all of our existing facilities and to get an idea of where we're gonna be heading in the next decade. I've got a meeting this week with the College of Informatics at NKU. I'm looking forward to that. And I know I mentioned it last month, I'll mention it again this month, the 21st, Saturday the 21st, is the Kenton County Mayor's Group Meeting at 9 o'clock, and we are the fortunate host of the meeting this month. So we'll be meeting right here in this room. Breakfast is usually, well, breakfast will be provided, 9 o'clock on the 21st, so please attend that if you can. But that will continue on. To the reports of the committees. First off, we've got public safety, the police. Mrs. Cowan.
Yes. You should have all received your police report in your emails, and I have a few highlights that I would like to read to you. First of all, representatives from the Southern Police Institute requested Erlanger and a few other Northern Kentucky departments to participate in a foreign police executive observer program for about two weeks in May. So arrangements are being made for Erlanger Police to host two police officials from Lebanon for several hours next month to discuss implementing community-oriented policing, departmental command structure, and administration procedures. The next item, several of our officers participated in the 30th Annual Law Enforcement Torch Run, which is a charity-running event conducted by law enforcement officers to benefit Special Olympics. Erlanger PD won a trophy, tying with the airport police for the most volunteers, so we're proud of that. And then also, Chief Wilson attended the Special Olympics Track Meet event at Lloyd High School, and he passed out medals and awards to the athletes. And I know I've seen pictures of these on Facebook somewhere, I don't know where exactly who put those in there, but they were very impressive. So, that's all I have, and Chief Wilson's in the house.
Just as the Mayor mentioned, National Police Week, May 15th through 21st. Just wanted to invite everybody down to Covington, to the Northern Kentucky Police Memorial for its annual observance. May 18th at 7:00 PM, it's in front of the Suspension Bridge, it's 303 Court Street, it's the old courthouse. If you haven't been to one, it's, they put on a really good show, it's really nice to honor all the officers of Northern Kentucky that have given their sacrifices. So, if you have an hour, hour and a half on May 18th, it's a Wednesday, 7:00 PM, we moved it up, up the past year from the morning to the evening so that more people could make it. And it's very family-oriented, there's plenty of parking, and it's quite a sight, so if you can make it, everybody's invited to come down. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mrs. Cowan. Next up, on our public safety, we've got fire EMS. Mrs. Skidmore, Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, just looking at the activity during the month of April, there were 229 total incidents, those including 62 fire, 167 EMS, four actual fires, and 58 other incidents where the fire engines were sent. Our total responses for the year are just under 1,200, that's through four months, so right on an even pace for this year. Chief Wilson is also in the house. So, did you have, Keith Whitaker?
Fire Department's now?
Yes, he's going to.
Yeah. They might like that. I looked it right up.
I do, I would like to address one thing, and I think that this is a committee time for this, so I'm right or wrong, I feel that I need to do this. There was an email that was delivered today to council members concerning the facility study, which involves the firehouse study, and there was some other mention of our city administrator, Mark Fields, in this, and I want to address this with each council member who's had a chance to review that email. You know, I love passion, and when people are passionate, I admire that. I would never, never, you know, refute anybody that wanted to be passionate, but sometimes passion can be misguided and misinformed. And the email that was sent out today, I think, meant with all its good intentions, was not, was not necessary, and it's not correct. And I feel like I have to say something because it's, it kind of gave a position that someone believes they, they have, and they were kind of speaking for the Fire Department. And I figure if anybody needs to do that, it needs to be me. And there were some discussions of the city administrator trying to direct this to a one firehouse city, and let me tell you, this facility study is a necessary, beyond overdue thing that needs to get done. We need a fresh set of eyes to come into this city, look at this, and for the Fire Department, figure out where the best spot is that we can best serve. And I'll support whatever the study comes back and tells us we need to do, because they're smarter folks than me. So whether it be one firehouse, eight firehouses, whatever it is, I'm gonna support it. And the other thing I'd like to say is that, you know, if our city administrator is anything but a micromanager, the decisions that I have made in the Fire Department have been mine, and there have been many that he has disagreed with, but he has let me run the department. So how that department stands now is my vision and what I have done. He has had the courage to give up the reins to let an outsider run that department, and everything, everything that happens in that Fire Department is my responsibility. It is not Mark Field's, it is me. So I just wanted to address that and make sure that that was clear, and I'll be here afterwards if anybody would like to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next up, we've got Public Works, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore?
Sure, we actually have a lot of information tonight to just go over. One of the things, just to let everybody know, is that we are involved in some remediation of properties, grass that had been added on to Public Works, so you may see some jungle cats in some of the yards, but we are getting to that to get, get rid of those, so just be aware of that. Also, in addition, we had a committee meeting, and we did talk about LED lighting. I believe at this time, we are reviewing those still, Mark? Is that what we're looking at?
I'm sorry, I can't.
With the LED lighting inside here, so we're still reviewing that to see kind of where we wanna go.
We're moving, we're gonna move forward with the inside lighting and the outside of this building, see where that goes. Public Works is still replacing some of the fixtures inside, if I'm not correct, Dale, on that one?
Yeah, so we're looking at that from a standpoint that's gonna be substantial savings to the city, so we need to look at how we're gonna remediate that with the rest of the lighting. Sidewalk maintenance, I believe we're going to find out actually how much sidewalk we have in the City of Erlanger. There are some sections that are going badly. We do have ordinances that we have to look at to, if we're going to do something about that.
Just to add on to that, Mr. Bogard and I have been talking about that, and PDS actually does offer a service that will come in and map all of our sidewalks. We're in the process now of trying to get some kind of quote from them to see if we can get that accomplished. That was news to us, we really weren't sure that they did sidewalks, but they do, so that's one of the services, so we'll be looking at that. Hopefully, have information for you.
That'll help us then with that. In addition, we will have three bids tonight that Mr. Vioxx will be discussing, and then also, Mr. Meyer, would you like to talk about the facilities assessment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cahill. The Facilities Assessment Committee met and were reviewing the bids that were submitted to do the facilities assessment study as well as the firehouse location study. And the one thing that I wanted to reiterate, what Chief Whitaker mentioned, is that the the- mentioned, is that the goal of the study is to look at all of our facilities and really start thinking about some long-term planning of what we need to serve the city. As a follow-on to that is, we know that some of our firehouses are, you know, in need of some updates and repair. They weren't designed to be, to service the way that they're servicing today. So we want to ask an outside company to come in and look at where, what do we need, and where do we need to have things located. So that's the overall goal of the assessment. There's no preconceived opinions of what we're going to have, what we're going to do at this point. So right now, we're going through the bids that have been submitted. Mr. Fields is doing some reference checks for us so that we can make a recommendation to council of what we want to do going forward.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Skidmore, actually, as a follow-up too.
Okay. May the 15th through the 21st is National Public Works Week. The theme is always there. Please join us in the celebration, the success of our outstanding Public Works On May the 11th, Mr. Bogart will be working on the reverse salt auction. If anyone's interested in seeing how that operates, please contact Mr. Bogart. And Public Works staff and City Engineer Vioxx attended a pre-construction meeting held at the Northern Kentucky Water District for the first phase of water main replacement project on Reggs Avenue. This project is to start on May the 16th. So if you want any more details, please contact Mr. Bogart.
And Dale's in the house, if you have any questions.
All right. Anything further, Mr. Wilson?
No, I have nothing for the radio.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next up, then, we have Administration. Mr. Howard, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes, Mayor. I just need to, just want to report progress on our property taxes. In April, we collected $25,513 in property taxes. So far, for the fiscal year 2016, we've collected $4,143,642 in taxes. And we've got $60,791 in delinquent taxes this year so far. And they, there were 187 delinquent notices mailed in April, in April. So also just want to let you know about our passports. We do a lot of passports in here in the city. And in the month of April, we processed 123 passports. That's a lot of passports.
Wow.
What are you thinking about? Overall, just in, just fiscal year 2016, we've processed 1,375 passports. So there's a lot of people in Earlanger traveling. So we're glad they're coming here to get their passports processed. So, and I believe you have the Cahills, like, our events.
Yes, we have our upcoming events for the city of Earlanger on, let's see, on May the 29th through the 23rd is the Northern Kentucky Senior Games. And those are held at Fort Thomas and Boone Woods. I think the Fort Thomas ones are indoor. They're like table tennis, et cetera, basketball. And Boone Woods does the outside ones, horseshoes, running events, et cetera. And Kim Walking will be representing the city of Earlanger at the Northern Kentucky Senior Games. And you must be ages 50 or over and engage in a spirited competition and exercise through many different games and events. And she said spirited competition, it is to die and kill far. Trust me, I have been there, done that. They take no prisoners at those. And 5:14 is Train Day at the Depot Park. And Kim is assisting the Historical Society on the first Train Day event. It coincides with National Train Day. And this event includes a train conductor on stilts, doing balloon sculpting, train tattoos, giveaway, refreshments, and lots of information pertaining to trains. So if you're interested in that, again, 5:14 is Train Day at the Depot. And on 5:26 is Earlanger-Elsmere Night at the Freedom Game. And this event is cosponsored by Earlanger-Elsmere Schools, the city of Elsmere and Earlanger. The event includes a youth ballgame, Tinkerbell and Peter Pan, a water slide, dunking booth, and the Freedom Game. All proceeds will benefit the family resource and youth services centers in Elsmere. And don't forget, May the 1st is National City Clerk Week. We want to thank Sherri Hofman and the whole Department, Administration Department for a job well done, presents, food, anything greatly appreciated if you'd like to drop by and let them know how much you appreciate everything they do. That's it. And Sherri, I don't have anything.
All right. Thank you, Sherri. Thank you. All right, next up, we've got Economic Development and Finance. Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you. We held a finance committee meeting on April 19th. And during the meeting, Steve Bodie presented the budget for fiscal year 2017 and the amended budget for 2016. No changes were made to the proposals after the committee meeting. We have the first reading of the ordinance to approve the amended budget and next budget on tonight's agenda. And you have been presented with a completed budget document for your review. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Is Stephen Gregor in the house?
Yes, they're not.
Nothing to add? All right, thank you. We'll move on. Next up is Codes, Building, and Zoning. Mr. Dunhoff, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, we've got a couple things. Should have received your report from Mr. Han. Any questions, you can get ahold of him. And on April 19th, we had a meeting on discussing the permit fees, which Mr. Han talked about. We would like to set up a committee meeting for the 17th for that. And the second thing is, if you all remember, a while back, somebody wanted to, came to Dave Han to change the corner of Turkeyfoot and Stevenson to commercial. And at that time, we wasn't really wanting to do it. While he's back, Mr. Han's talked to him. So we would like to call a committee meeting on that on the 17th. Possible to discuss, you know, a hybrid zone, which is kind of like Earlanger Road over here. So we'll talk about it then. Mr. Han's in the house?
All right, thank you. Next item, under Progress and Revitalization by Mrs. Pitts. Mr. Cahill?
Mr. Skidmore, do you have any update on Logo?
Now, Todd was sitting in here. Did he just step out to use the phone, or is he coming back in? Does anybody know?
He's, yeah, he's got to somewhere.
Okay. Because Todd Brundle's student that had presented the logo earlier, she's done some revamping on it. And Sherri, do you have it so that you can bring it up? And then I guess, Mark, then you're going to talk a little bit?
I can't.
Did everybody get a copy of this in their email?
No.
Oh, okay. Did they get copies of the other one, Sherri?
No, they did not.
Oh, okay. This is one of the adjustments that the student made. I have no idea if it's a boy, a guy, or a girl. It doesn't really matter. Okay. Oh, okay. Can you show the other two then, Sherri? Because we asked, we asked the student to revamp and fine-tune it a little bit.
The same one.
This is the same one, but they've just put, they wrote "fire" on the swoosh.
And the E is italicized.
Okay.
I think the 1897.
Okay.
Or the other one's at the top.
Okay. You can't put them together on there, can you? You're pretty good, Sherri. Can you put them up there together?
It's kind of neat how the, you know, the loop ends up with a star where we are. That's, it's pretty cool.
Put them up together, but here's. Okay, the 1897's up there in the top. I would still like to see the word Earlanger in some place, because it's still, it could be Edgewood, it could be Elsmere. We need to make it our logo. But I do like the different ideas that.
Yeah.
Student has given.
Yeah, seems like we're on the right track.
So maybe if Mark wants to tell us his progress, and then you can come back and talk about this, maybe if anybody wants to make any comments.
Yeah, at the last committee meeting, I, we've been instructed to reach out to Thomas Moore and to NKU, which I did both. I have one proposal back from Thomas Moore, but it is a instructor's proposal and not a student proposal. I'm supposed to have that one by Friday from them. I've had nothing back from NKU at this time. However, Ms. Royer, and I believe I'm saying that right, she contacted us. I met with her. She contacted us yesterday, Sherri, and said she was going to have us something, but I have nothing. And it's just a proposal to see how they would go about this whole project is what I asked for. So I have one that is from the instructor at Thomas Moore. It has some cost involved in it, so we need to review it. Not sure what the student one will look like when it comes back, but we'll see what it says. NKU simply asked for an email that they would post on the wall. And if any student was interested, then that student would be responsible for contacting us. Didn't get ahold of anybody from there yet with that. So that's where we stand on that. I have the one proposal. I'm supposed to have the other one by Friday from Thomas Moore, from the students, and then Ms. Royer, which I think, Ms. Skidmore, you're familiar with her now?
Yes, Ryer.
Ryer, Ryer.
R-Y-R.
Yes. Yes, because when I met with her, she said she knew you and worked on some committees with you or something, so.
I believe she worked with, I could get the attorney's name on a corner across from Randy.
Yeah, she works with Mr. Adams, yes.
Yeah, that's it. Ron Adams. And he's been here before.
Anyway, Last History, she said she was more than willing to jump in and help. And so my goal was to get those proposals, get them to you, and then set up the meetings with you and the committee and with those people, so you can review on them. So that's where we stand. Sorry, I don't have more to report.
Okay. Does, did anybody like these that the student finalized? Or do they have any comments on the ones that Sherri put up there, those three? Anybody have any comments?
I think it should say deliver fire.
I think it does need the word Earlanger in it.
You can also, just.
I still like the one by.
You can put Earlanger in the top bar of the E and would balance it out pretty good.
What about the 1897?
Any other comments or discussion on it?
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
On the 1897, I was just telling Renee that it's kind of faint. Is there some way we could outline it to make it?
That's a good idea.
Pop out.
It needs to be bolder.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because when they send it, you can't really see it.
Well, when it's down in the bottom on the, on the other one.
I can see it now.
Yeah.
All right. Still a work in progress.
It's still progress.
Yeah, thank you.
Hopefully, then when they get back with Mark, then we'll have something to.
Yeah. Thank you for your continued efforts on that, Renee and Mark. All right, you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented? Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, then, we'll move on to the reports of representatives. Are there any reports from the representatives? I'm sure, Mrs. Skidmore, okay? Kenton County Alliance, fantastic.
Because their meetings are on Tuesday in the afternoon, and then I'm in here in the evening. So this one, they talked about vaping. It's the new way for the kids to get drugs. And it says there's eight things every parent should know. They smoke it, they do all kinds of vaping. V is in Victor, A-P-I-N-G, vaping. It says, by any name, all e-cigarettes are the same. They are drug delivery devices. Some do not have nicotine. They don't always look like cigarettes. The sweet flavors attract young people. The ads target kids. E-cigs could mean trouble at school. And the positive is talking with your kids can help. And this is a, like a brochure, a flyer. And it's, I don't know if these almost look like e-cigarettes. And that's what they put this, that's how they do this inhale and exhale? I've never tried it, so I can't. But evidently, it's the newest, one of the newer things out there to get high. So that's what we spent most of the day talking about, and how to address it and how to get the word out as to what's going on.
All right, thank you. Any other reports from representatives? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the reports of city operations. City Engineer, Mr. Vioxx?
Yes, sir. The mayor indicated that he thought Mr. Bogart would be here this evening to present some information on the underpass. The reason Mr. Bogart's not here, Mr. Bogart was in the process of resolving the acquisition of the easements necessary to support the Nelson Road Sidewalk Project. And he took a pretty good ice bath. He informed me by phone that we can forget the project, that the property owners don't want it anymore. There's some irritation on what side of the street it was going to be on. And if you recall, they indicated that they were all on board. They were all willing to provide whatever support it took to build it. You all moved the money into this year to do it. We engineered it. We prepared all the easements. Mr. Bogart arranged to have a notary there to get the easement signed. And turned out that there's a number of the property owners that aren't happy with the project, even though they knew it was going to be on their side of the road and suggested put it on the other side of the street. It's kind of interesting that we, just two weeks ago, we talked about that problem. You know, they want, they want it, but not in my yard. So you'll find when we review the bids here in a few minutes, you were going to save quite a bit of money on bids of the three projects altogether. And you're going to save a lot more now when you cancel that project. Mr. Bogart was going to give a report this evening about the Norfolk Southern Underpass. And I did get an email from him that went to the mayor, myself, and Mark, and I think the city attorney. He has been in contact with the Norfolk Southern Bridge Inspector. He was given a clue on who to contact in Atlanta. He made a contact. They put him on to a connection on permitting. And he would like to set up a meeting with the mayor and representatives, including Mark, for next week to talk about the necessary permits that they have to get from the railroad to do it. In my discussion with Rick, when I knew this was going to happen, I told him it was important to him to follow up and get that same information with the highway department, so we don't have to have dual activity that they know that highway department can support the project, which they already had committed to help us with. But if you recall, I told you they weren't going to do anything until they were new for sure the project was going to happen, and it was going to be funded. And I think you all have taken care of the funding part. So Mr. Bogart is making some great progress here with this. I will say that when we do the bids in a minute, I'm going to tell you that the Nelson Road Sidewalk Project is going to be rejected. And unfortunately, I'm going to have to tell a contractor that thought he had a project to start on. He's not going to be doing it. So ahead.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the railroad thing, when are they, when I had talked to Rick, and I don't know if you'll even know the answer to this, I don't know if Rick talked to you about it. But they're supposed to be working on that crossing, as rough as it is. They were supposed to start, this is Tuesday. They were supposed to start that yesterday.
Yeah. I was there at that meeting, and they did give us that date. It was Monday. The track maintenance people are kind of at the, I don't know the word I want to use for, but they're, what they do is dictated by the traffic. And they can only work on that intersection on Mondays. That's why this permit to do the overpass is going to be a very difficult thing for us to work around, due to the high volume of traffic that they are experiencing at Norfolk Southern now. They were supposed to do it on Monday, but they have to get the go-ahead from the traffic controllers in order for them to do that. Obviously, that didn't come through this week. They're talking about a six-hour timeframe to fix that, is all they're talking about. They're going to close it from 9 till 3:00 in the afternoon, try to keep it open for the rush hour. So we're hoping that it will be on a Monday. And I was at that meeting with him, and they said it's going to be this Monday. It didn't happen. So hopefully, it will happen next Monday. That, now, don't hold me to that, okay?
I'm hoping so.
All right. Because this is the railroad, and they can do it, whatever. But they're going to replace just that one side. And then- And then it's going to be replaced within the next couple of years, the whole intersect, the whole crossing with the rubberized. It's like out on 25 and Industrial Road, that whole thing. They're gonna redo that and get rid of all the concrete is what their plan is for that.
I thought they were doing that now.
No, 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 no. They're just doing the half of it, the half that they should have done before that it just got pushed back and pushed back. They're gonna replace that track, fill it in just like the other one, and then the whole thing will be replaced when they do the whole rubberized crossing. At least that was my understanding of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we've got the city attorney, Mr. Gatlin. Do you have anything to report?
Yeah, we have a matter that'll be taken up later in executive session, but I do want to report on SD1 and good news. We have reached a tentative agreement with SD1. We do need to go city by city to make sure that they're on board with the agreement, but I don't know why they wouldn't be. SD1 has agreed to pledge $350,000 per year going forward for the lateral line program. That's point number one. And that, based on the engineers, SD1 engineer estimate and just past practice, will well exceed the need. So that should cover the lateral line problem. The other big caveat to the settlement is that if they pull the funding in the future, they will give adequate notice to all of us so that we can lobby the board and lobby the judge executives who ultimately have final say or at least a big component to the budget. Third component is, is that SD1 will fix not only the lateral lines in the right-of-way, but will also be solely responsible for repairing the roadways and returning them back to the same condition. So they'll do all the sidewalk repair. They'll do all the ground repair. They'll repair all of the roadways. And then the fourth part is that there will be no indemnification agreement in the interlocal agreement because, quite frankly, there's no need for an indemnification agreement because SD1 is beginning to be doing all of this work on their own. So there is an amended interlocal agreement that will be presented at the next regular council meeting, presuming that the other 11 to 12 cities that are involved in this are okay with this resolution.
That's a good thing.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gatlin. All right, next up, we've got the city council attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We've got a couple of properties that are in foreclosure due to delinquent taxes and nuisance liens. Those properties are gonna be offered for sale at public auction by the master commissioner on Tuesday, May the 31st. I need some direction about what you want me to do as far as the bidding process. So I'd like to bring those items up in the executive session also for litigation purposes.
Okay. And that's a master commissioner sale?
That's correct.
On the 31st?
Yes.
All right. And do we have a list of the properties?
There's two of them. One is the property on Commonwealth, or Cowie Avenue. That's owned by Mr. Johnston. The other one is a property on Jaclyn Drive owned by Karen White. Property on Cowie Avenue is 3410 Cowie Avenue. The property on Jaclyn is... Big deal. Well, and I don't have the address, Mayor. I do have it, but I just can't present it to you right now.
Okay.
If you all remember, a few years ago, we were having lots of trouble with all of those duplexes that were in that, I guess, the third block off of Stevenson Road, the third cul-de-sac that you go through. This is one of those duplexes. The rest of those duplexes were taken over by the state, if we remember back then. And they were rehabbed and done. This was the only one that was not at that point in time. And the owner retained ownership of that one somehow, and this is where it's come to today. So that's the property that it is. It's one of those duplexes.
All right. Okay. Maybe that's fine. We could probably.
The address is 3612 Jaclyn Drive.
Great.
And as Mark indicated, it's a duplex.
All right, thank you. Anything further to report?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we've got the city administrator, Mr. Fields.
Let's be brief. Since Senator McDaniel talked about the extension of Houston Road getting and making it into the budget, I'd also like to throw out a thank you to Representative Koenig because he actually called me from the floor when they were working on that budget to see about a number to put in that budget to do that. I'm not sure exactly what stayed in that, but we had done some work with Mr. Vioxx before, some engineering work and some studies, and had some plans for Houston Road. So we base that off of the work that had been done in the past. Glad to hear, and thank you to both of those for getting that in there because we know we have to get that road built at some point in time. And we have applied for grants to get this done. And hopefully, just because it's in there right now does not mean that it's going to stay. Just everybody remember that, okay? So we know it's there now, but when we go asking for it does not mean that we're actually gonna get to spend it. But it's good that it's there. So thank both of them. They did a great work for us on that side of it. On May 10th, there's gonna be a special committee meeting in here. Sheri's going to be advertising that. It's gonna be for a KLC update of this legislative session. So J.D. Chaney from the Kentucky League of Cities is gonna be here and update us on all of the KLC legislation that came through on that side. There was a lot of it, a lot of it. Somebody mentioned, and this just came to mind, somebody mentioned the passports and the number of passports that we're doing. There was also a bill that was passed that the governor vetoed, talking about our driver's license. And the new driver's license rules that the feds have put out in case you want to fly. Well, your Kentucky driver's license does not comply with all of the security measures that the feds are now requiring. That bill was going to change that and have those requirements, okay, done. That's why we're seeing, I think, probably a bigger increase in the number of passports. And that's even gonna get larger if Kentucky doesn't do something and comply with what the federal rules are because I think it's 2018 it's been pushed back to now. But you're not gonna be able to fly domestically with your driver's license. You're gonna have to have a passport to fly domestically if you're trying to use your Kentucky driver's license as your ID. But again, it's been pushed back to 2018. They might push it back further, who knows? Because I think they've already pushed it back once. I think 16 was the year, and they've already put two more years on it. So the legislature and the governor are gonna have to do something about changing those security measures on our driver's license, or we're not gonna be able to use them for domestic flights. And they have been overwhelmed at the front office with those passports. They've been doing a wonderful job up there doing that. The only other thing I got is, of course, the executive session. We need to go in executive session after this to talk about litigation. So that's it. Thank you. We can do it.
It's up to you.
After legislation, okay. All right, you've heard the reports of our representatives and city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, I forgot one thing. You're gonna hear a resolution tonight, and it is for us to apply for a grant. Just let you know, it's a joint SNK, which is the OKI funds to build sidewalks. We're requesting these funds to build a sidewalk along Dahlwick Drive. I just got a text earlier tonight from Boone County. It's gonna be a joint application with us in Boone County because it's gonna travel through both jurisdictions. And Boone County's fiscal court did approve the resolution tonight to go into that joint with us. They just did that. So that's the resolution that you'll be hearing. So Boone County's already approved it, just so everybody knows.
And Mr. Hahn, did you track down what SNK stands for? We had the question come up earlier.
Surface Transportation Program Funds for Northern Kentucky.
That's a mouthful.
Surface Transformation Funds for Northern Kentucky.
Kentucky.
Wow. All right, thank you. All right, Mrs. Hoffman, do we have any correspondence this evening? All right. And do we have any citizens or public comments for this evening? I don't think we've got anybody signed up. Yes, no? Okay. All right, then the next section is our bids. First one is the city building retaining wall, Mr. Vioxx.
Yes, sir. You have on your desk the bids for the Erlanger City Building Retaining Wall. This is both the wall on the office building side and the front. We consulted with Thielen Associates, and we were able to put together a package that we thought would be close to the budget amount for the walls for the whole thing. And we didn't want to do part of it. We only had one bidder, and it's advanced contractors and estimators. And you can see that the total bid is $83,225 for the two different pieces, part B and A. If you go back to the front sheet, you'll notice that based on that and the fees and inspection and all the other services necessary to support it, the total project is $98,771. That is $5,951.50 over the estimate that we had previously. But based on the fact that I just told you, if we even awarded all three of these projects, we were gonna be almost $14,000 under our budget. It's our recommendation that we award this work to advanced contractors and estimators at $83,225. And they have been a contractor for us in the past. They did our walls down on Bullet Pen when we had to issue along Bullet Pen Creek.
All right, does that call for a vote right now? All right, so can we get a motion? Got a motion from Mr. Dunhoff to accept the bid at $98,771.
No, no, $83,225.
Okay, excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm reading the, okay. $83,225, okay. And do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, let me just roll on.
Yeah, please.
All right, the second bid is the Hallam Avenue Melting and Resurfacing. We had a number of bidders for that. If you go to the second page, Paul Michaels &amp; Sons was the low bidder at $56,983.20. Second was Eaton Asphalt Company Incorporated at $57,500. Bluegrass Paving was third at $58,427.50. And fourth was Lynn Rigler Blacktop at $60,822.80. If you go back to the front sheet, you'll see that I've shown anticipated extra work of $3,000. And I want to make sure we put this in the minutes and that you approve that because we always find when we do resurfacing projects, where we melt and expose the old concrete, the restoration of some of those areas we can't see usually exceeds what we can see on the surface. So I don't want to have to be coming back and asking you for something I anticipate spending. So if you don't mind, I'd appreciate you award the work to Paul Michaels &amp; Sons at $56,983.20 with the understanding that the anticipated extra work on the project could be $3,000.
All right, can we get a motion to that effect? Motion by Mr. Burke to award at $56,983 with anticipated extra work at $3,000 for a total of $59,983.
Twenty.
And 20 cents, thank you. A second? Second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion?
So that will come back to us if it goes over the $3,000?
Do we want to come back for the $3,000? No.
No, if it goes over the $3,000.
The inspector, Mr. Bogart's staff, will decide if they need to utilize the money. If they don't, we won't spend it. If it runs over $3,000, we will have to come back.
Okay.
That's what he just asked, yeah.
That's what he asked.
Great. Any other discussion, comments?
We did have a meeting, and some of these projects have been that way, but also on that extra money that's there at $3,000. There will be documentation in the file of why, in fact, that overreach was used. So it'll be there for historical records.
Keeps Greg and his staff happy.
Yes.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, the last project is the Nelson Road project. We did receive bids. I will read them, so they're in the record. TMS Construction was the low bidder at $62,793.70. Second bidder was Straight Edge Construction LLC at $75,818. A third was Advanced Contractors and Estimators at $85,549.50. And fourth was Hendy Incorporated at $90,151. If you go back to your front sheet, you'll see that based on even anticipated extra work, and the reason we would have anticipated extra work on that job is because when you do a sidewalk project or a street job that involves driveways, we always have issues associated with the property owners, and we want the inspector to have the latitude to make the adjustment as we were building the project. So we just want to keep you aware of that. But in this case, I want you to not award the project on the basis we were unable to obtain the easements.
All right. And just so I can clarify this, if for some reason we're able to get the property owners to agree and sign off on the easements, then would you anticipate that we'd have to rebid it? All right.
Didn't we have that in signatures for this?
Yes.
I thought we did. I thought it was all taken care of already. We never did have the signatures. What we had was one of the residents had came here and told us that everybody was in agreement and that the signatures were forthcoming. And that's what we tried to get, right?
Yeah, he had signatures.
It was not, it was not, it was not the easements. It was not giving us.
There was a paper saying these people were behind it.
Okay, they were behind it until they found out, like Mr. Vioxx said, that it was going through their yard, and then they wanted us to fix this and fix that, and the guarantee we were gonna have to landscape back and fix driveways and do all kinds of things. So, so.
And then the comment was, put it on the other side of the street. If, Mayor, if you want, I can ask the contractor if he's willing to hold his bid for some period of time. And if he is, and you think there's still some opportunity, I can do that.
I think that'd be.
But the only reason, the only reason we got this very low bid and it's way under the estimate is the contractor was looking for a job, and he thought he was gonna be able to start tomorrow or the next day. And I don't think he's gonna hold his bid, but I'll ask him.
Does the bidding documents require him to hold it for some minimal time? Okay. All right, yeah, I think it's probably worth asking and maybe give it one last shot. We've been talking about this for darn near a year, it seems like. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Vioxx.
Yes, sir. That's all I have. And then the next bid's being handled by Public Works.
Oh, yeah.
So we have the Depot Deck renovation, and this is gonna be a staff work project. They do have a bid from Stegman Landscaping of $26,143. They add $2,500 of extra work anticipated for a total of $28,643 for a total for this. They all not sure, did we have any other bids besides Stegman? Okay. So that's, okay. Yeah. So that was the low bid, and that would be our recommendation in the form of a motion to accept this bid.
All right, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Lively bunch tonight. All right, Mrs. Hoffman, Mr. Vioxx, are there any other bids to review this evening?
All I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there any old business, unfinished business, Mr. Dunhoff?
I just want to remind everybody that Erlanger Lions Club is bringing their carnival back after three years. It will start May 20. It'll start May twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, Memorial Day weekend. Kissel Brother Ride Company, if you want to know what they have, you can go on their website under Kissel Company or next weekend you can go down to Covington and see the rides they're having down there because those are the rides we'll have. We will have the kitchen back where we're doing our fishing, our own meals. We won't have any outside vendors, so come up and enjoy yourselves and we're going to change everything. And if it rains, you won't get wet. We got two big tents up there, everything's going to be under, so.
Wow. And is there an admission?
No admission, no.
Okay.
But they will do, the ride company is, next week they're going to run schools and let them know that it's on Thursday, Friday, or Friday, Saturday and Sunday, all you can ride is fifteen dollars if you buy a ticket up front, brace it up front, or the night is going to be twenty dollars. So it is all three nights they will run, where they can ride all the rides for one price.
Wow. All right. Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, do we have any new business to discuss? Corinne?
I was going to be mean and say old business, but I wanted to, everybody to recognize Greg Engelmann. But I'm being nice, so I waited till it was new business. Tonight's his last meeting. I kept thinking it was next month, but it's tonight. I wish I would have done this before all the people left here today. But I just remember when I was new here, we scooped him up real quick because we heard he was great and he did not disappoint and we are really, really, really going to miss you. So.
Agreed. Yeah, thank you, Corinne.
I'd like to add something to that. I am going to miss you, Greg. I really, truly am. Been doing my best for the last few months to try to get him to, you know, stick around part-time. Oh, wait a minute, we can't do that, can we? We've already done that one. Yeah. I wanted to thank you because I know when I came over to this office two and a half years ago, almost three now, Greenhorn, you took me under your wing and I appreciate that and everything that you did for me. I know that Steve has experienced the very same thing for the short time he's been here. I can't tell you all how invaluable Greg is and his experience that he's brought to this city and he's put a system in place that we should be able to follow. And if not, I have promised, or he has promised me, not to change his cellphone number, so we can, we can call and reach out to Greg and, yeah, we know where he lives, so I think we can, we can find him.
Track him down.
Track him down.
You need to share that number with all of us.
Yeah, we will.
I agree. I'm right there with you, with you too because, you know, on top of what Mark's saying, you know, coming in here a little over a year ago, not having any experience with government operation too, Greg had such a matter-of-fact way of explaining how things work and why we do the things we do and explaining it in a way that is, you know, like I said, very matter-of-fact, but also in layman's terms that someone, a simpleton like me, could understand it and I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Greg. Going to miss you. Really going to miss you. Thank you.
He's done a tremendous job on our retreat.
Yes.
Took our retreat for a full day, down to a half-day, a couple hours now, and I know Steve. We appreciate that, especially during that.
The retreat's almost shorter than our council meetings.
That's right. Right on.
Steve's going to do the same thing, he promised.
All right, any other new business? All right. We'll move on to legislation then. The first one is an ordinance for the Duke Energy franchise. This is the second reading.
It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, accepting the bid and granting to Duke Energy Kentucky, Inc., a non-exclusive franchise for the use of the public streets, alleys and other public grounds of the city for the transmission and distribution of both natural gas and electricity through and for consumption within the city for the period of July one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. By summary, the ordinance first accepts the bid of Duke Energy and the second section grants to them the franchise that I've just described.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mr. Howard. Any discussion?
I think it's great.
All in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, that's a roll call vote. I always do that wrong. Thank you.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next item is an ordinance for the OEC franchise. This is the second reading.
It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, accepting the bid of and granting to Owen Electric Cooperative, Inc., a non-exclusive franchise for the use of the public streets, alleys and other public grounds of the city for the transmission and distribution of electricity through and for consumption within the city for the period of July one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. By summary, Section one accepts the bid of Owen. Section two likewise, like the ordinance for Duke, grants to them the franchise that I just described.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
All right, motion carried. Next item is another ordinance for a map amendment to the Dixie Cave Run.
This is an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Erlanger County of Kenton, Kentucky for an area commonly known as forty-three-hundred to forty-four-oh-eight Dixie Highway, an area of approximately 3.8 acres located on a northwest corner of the intersection of Cave Run Drive with Dixie Highway, from R2, a multifamily residential zone, and NC, a neighborhood commercial zone with a binding development plan, to NC, a neighborhood commercial zone with no binding development plan. By summary, the City of Erlanger approves the zoning map amendment for the 3.8 acre area that the aforementioned map amendment is recommended by the Kenton County Planning and Zoning Commission and is adopted on the following basis, that the proposed map amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives and economy element of direction 23D, your voice, your choice, and that the proposed map amendment is consistent with the recommended land use map element of direction 2030, your voice, your choice.
All right, this is the second reading. Do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, a second. Second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I still have a question and I don't, I don't understand, I've talked to David Hahn. I still, I still don't understand. Maybe I'm confused, but when it says there's no, that they don't have, you don't have to know what's going in that, that there's no development plan, that it's, they can do whatever they want? What it comes down to?
No, that doesn't mean they do whatever they want. It was the.
Tell me what they can't do.
What they can't do?
What they can't.
Any kind of, any kind of plan would have to still be submitted to the, to the city. But what it was, was that zoning in particular, when they put it up there, it was basically talking about the entrances and the exits on Dixie Highway and trying to do that. So it was a binding plan about not having any more curb cuts and I believe I'm right, Mr. Vioxx, on this one. Curb cuts coming in, they wanted everything traveling down that access road. Basically, it was the old Aldies. So there would be no more curb cuts on Dixie Highway itself. However, when, when the other development came up and the bank closed and was going to move, the building positioning was a little different in how it was, so then that was the binding part of that. Still, it's still there. They still had to put it, Dollar General still had to come here, still had to get that plan approved, still had to meet the setbacks and do some of those things that are still in our zone from that. But mainly it had to deal with what the cuts were coming in there. So none of the other property, the parking lot that's in front of the old Aldies, that vacant lot there and coming out, it's that whole 3.8 acres there. It's not just where the Dollar General was. It goes all the way up past there. But it basically was dealing with those curb cuts and they want everything coming through the traffic light, coming down Cave Run, and I don't even believe that that street is named behind there that runs in between the two, that's even named, but if any developments would come in that way, that's where it would be and there would be no curb cuts, basically, out on Dixie Highway.
So it's still, anything going in would need to still, I mean, that area would still need to comply with zoning and it would still need to come to us first for review.
Actually, Mr. Dunhoff, and I've served on the Housing Committee and that particular piece of property was one of the, adjacent of that was being considered and that access that Mark's talking about was, was part of the issue associated with that, so it's all controlled by the entrances.
All right. So we've had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next item is an ordinance regarding the amended fiscal year 16 budget. This is the first reading.
It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlanger Ordinance Number 2414 and the budget adopted thereby for the City of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July one, 2015 and ending on June thirtieth, 2016. By summary, this is the amended budget and you can see the attachment to this ordinance as prepared, which is an Excel spreadsheet summarizing the changes and the amendments to the 2015-2016 budget.
All right, I ask the city clerk to please note in the minutes the first reading of this ordinance. Next item is another ordinance for the proposed fiscal year 17 budget, another first reading.
This is an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, adopting a budget for the City of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July one, 2016 and providing that no money shall be expended by on behalf of the City of Erlanger except in accordance with that adopted budget. Again, by summary, attached to this ordinance is the Excel spreadsheet, which is the combined operating budget for fiscal year July one, 2016 through June thirtieth, 2017.
All right, again, I'll ask the city clerk to please note in the minutes the first The next item is municipal order for surplus items.
This is a municipal order of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS 82.083 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. Specifically, if you turn to the last page, there are four pieces of property that the city is seeking disposal for and the disposal method is also indicated on that attachment.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this, this board has read? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the last item under legislation is the resolution, the Dahlwick Road Mineola Pike Sidewalk Retaining Wall.
This is the project that Mr. Fields discussed. It is a resolution of the City of Erlanger, Kentucky, authorizing Mayor Tyson Hermes to make application for and upon arrival tenor to an agreement with the OKI Regional Council of Governments to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by OKI to facilitate and administer the project and as to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. This is a joint application with Boone County Fiscal Court.
All right, do I entertain, excuse me, do I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution as read? Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion?
I've got a question. Just about the certain obligations and responsibilities. Are there any financial obligations to the city for this project?
Yeah, I can't, sorry.
My question was about, and the resolution is talking about certain obligations and responsibilities upon the city.
The total, the total project is, is right at $2 million and there is a 20% match that we would, we would split with Boone County if that project is that total, $2 million. So our liability's $200,000.
Is that $200,000 falling into, is that this fiscal year? That next fiscal year budget?
It would probably fall into this fiscal year budget if, in fact, it got approved. Ma'am. So we would have to come back and ask for them, but it's not going to be funded until probably next spring. I think that's when the funding comes through with those, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
On some of those, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's next spring. So it'd be after that we amended it and I'm sure that Steve's plan is probably about the same as Greg's, you know, when we came back after around January and did it the first time, that would be that, if we get, if, if we would get it, so. But that would be our liability. It's, it's about a $2 million project. Mr. Vioxx did most of the work on, on planning that out and engineering it all and designing that and I'm fairly sure it was right at the $2 million, it was like 1.9, right at that mark.
Got to explain where it begins. It begins at the intersection of Dahlwick and goes all the way out to Dahlwick and Hu, and I guess it's.
Turfway.
Turfway.
Yeah.
And goes all the way out Dahlwick to Mineola, then stays on Mineola and actually crosses the interstate and goes all the way over to Circle Port on the other side. So it interconnected the entire industrial area out there and that's where Boone County gets in the picture. About half of that route is actually in unincorporated Boone County.
Yeah. And we were approached by several of the businesses out there, Saney in particular, and have letters of support, Convergus being one, they put a bus stop out there with no sidewalks how to get there. We met with Saney and you know they've put all their human resources people and billing people are all working out of the Dahlwick Business Center now. They've got about 400 employees there. There's no walking path to get from their, their facility all the way up Dahlwick to Mineola where all the restaurants and, and all those other anomalies are there. Every business out there wants it, even some support from the trailer park owners, that owner of the trailer park is, is giving us that too. So it's, it's something that's needed in that area and very supported by the businesses. Every time that we meet with one of the businesses out there, they talk about that. And this is also going to be, and this is why we, we hope, the way it was designed and it's not just a basic sidewalk, it's a four-foot.
It's kind of a hike-a-biker trail.
Yeah.
And eventually it could get extended down into the Doe Run area. And Wild Flavors is one of the companies that wanted it badly.
Yeah. And it's going to be, and, and the walking biking trail is going to be actually a four-foot path way, all the way across there. I'm guessing when, you know, and still the state has signed off on it also, however, they did not put any funds into it. Of course, that's going to be going across 275 to connect the two sides, so that, there's a lot to be worked out with this project. We needed to get this in and get it on the scope to see. Just to let you know, Boone County is, is doing another application also, you only had to do two.